Yes. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Amanda, would you call the row please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snatzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malika.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobal.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me, little legends? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda or deletions to the agenda in council? Okay. So, um, I'll ask council to join me down to receive two proclamations and then a presentation, I believe, so, alright. Alright. The first proclamation is National Kids to Parks Day. Amanda, are you here with a special guest?
I'm actually Deb Washington's secretary.
Alright, Deb, are you gonna come up? And we do have a special guest. Who is your friend?
This is Buddy Bison, and he's with the National Park and Trust. And it's very special this year because he's a very, very busy bison since the park system is having their 100-year birthday. And so, he is at several parks, but he chose to come here to the city of Northland.
Thank you very much.
To see some of the others. So, he doesn't speak, but he's just a little dear.
I understand.
So, he's already here.
Okay, so would both of you kind of turn around and look into the camera? I will read the proclamation. Okay. And again, this is the National Kids to Parks Day proclamation. Whereas, May 21st, 2016 is the sixth Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and high cholesterol. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, National Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I rejoice Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, hereby proclaim May 21st, 2016 as National Kids to Parks Day in the City of Northland and urge residents to make time on the May 21st to take children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park dated at Northland, Colorado this ninth day of May, 2016. Congratulations and thank you. (applause) I'm going to review this before we leave.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that.
Alright. Do you want a picture?
I'd love a photo.
Okay. Buddy? Oh, okay, we'll do that after he goes through. Welcome. I too want to watch. (laughter) Buddy, do you want to come in and see everybody? Come here. Jim, come here.
We're good. Can you? I'm not so far. Okay. I picked him yesterday.
Got it.
Maybe I have a fun 21st. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, steady. Alright, we have another one. We'll wait for Buddy to... You have to lead him out, okay? Okay, Jim, May, are you going to come up for this proclamation? This proclamation is for National Law Enforcement Memorial Week and also National Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Whereas, the President of the United States, Congress, and the General Assembly of the State of Colorado have designated May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day. And the week of May 15th through the 21st is National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And whereas, during Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and in particular, on Peace Officers' Memorial Day, we honor those officers who made the ultimate sacrifice while performing their sworn duty. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, in 2015, 128 law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty in the United States. Four officers were killed in the line of duty in Colorado. Sergeant Sean Patrick Brentfro of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Trooper Taylor Joseph Thibault of Colorado State Patrol. Trooper Jamie Lynn Jurisfix? I'm not sure. I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong. Of the Colorado State Patrol. And Police Officer Garrett Preston Russell Swayze of the University of Colorado at Colorado Springs Police Department. And whereas, in the City of Northland tragically lost one of our own officers, Corporal Edgar E.B. Rains Jr., who was killed in the line of duty 32 years ago on May 30th in 1984. In honor of Corporal Rains and other fallen officers, a candlelight vigil will be held in A.E.B. Rains Jr. Memorial Park on Wednesday, May 11th, 2016. And whereas, it is fitting and appropriate for all citizens to join together in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, helping to preserve the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, I rejoice Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, to hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2016 as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week in the City of Northland and call upon all citizens to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and services. I further proclaim May 15th, 2016 as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the City of Northland in honor of those law enforcement officers who brought their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice, and service to their community dated at Northland, Colorado this ninth day of May, 2016. Would you like to say something?
Sure. This has been a really tough year for Colorado. 2015, 2016, we've been losing six officers. The City of Northland had several close calls. We had two officers shot last year, and we had, you know, a total of four officers shot at. So, we were very lucky and achieved that's a very scary and frightening situation when you have to go down to the hospital and see your officers there. So, this candlelight vigil this Wednesday is very important. We're gonna have agents from all over Colorado attending. A lot of officers, a lot of, you know, several families of those fallen officers will be in attendance as well. So, I'd love to have you guys come out Wednesday night at 7:30. It's an incredible event, and I'm very thankful that our officers have recovered this year those that weren't injured, so, thank you.
Thank you.[572.32][572.32](applause) Okay. We have another presentation here, and I just want to give you a little background about this. This is coming from actually our SafeBuild group here in the city. And SafeBuild, what they have done is they have created a scholarship program. And what they would like to do is they have gone through and have looked at a lot of surveys and different applications from students. And I just want to give you a little background about this. For the last seven years, SafeBuild has worked alongside the City of Northland providing building department services for the city. One of the SafeBuild's core commitments is to give back to the communities they serve. We are pleased that for the past three years, SafeBuild has offered a $1,000 scholarship to one of Northland's graduating seniors. The review committee consists of three City of Northland employees, one SafeBuild employee, and myself. There are many qualified applications that are submitted, and the applications are ranked best on three major categories. The quality and impact of a 500-word survey, adversity the student may have to overcome or has overcome, how they think the scholarship will help them in their future endeavors. Other items considered were community volunteering, extracurricular activities, and grade point average. We are very pleased tonight to be recognizing the student, William Bodan. He's an exceptional Northland student, and we wish him the greatest success in college. Before we present this scholarship, we would like to have the representatives from SafeBuild come up and also, come on, and also... All of you can come up, and I'm gonna turn this over to you to have any comments and make your presentation, so.
Well, it's not about us, SafeBuild. It is about the students that we do give the scholarships to. I did have the pleasure of reading your essay. I do wish you luck, keep working hard, and it's our pleasure to give you this big check.
Thank you. That's huge.
Is everything gonna be?
Thank you very much. If it's okay, I'd like to say...
Yes, please.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the SafeBuild for really just giving me the opportunity to make college a part of my reality. I've been working very hard every day to make sure that my grades were up to par and that college was a possibility for me. And I promise that with this check, I am a student right now that is very passionate about becoming a law enforcement officer. I would definitely go to that service, and I promise to give back to the community.
Great.[785.82][785.82](applause) Are all the pictures in? Marco, have you taken all the pictures you want?
I think so.
Okay. So, would you like to shake hands with the council?
Please.
Okay. So, you got it. Thank you so much for all you do. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm so proud of you.
I'm sorry, which university are you going to attend?
I will be attending University of Northern Colorado.[823.82][823.82](applause)
There's so many great resumes, and it was really hard to pick, you know? I am certainly glad that William received that. Alright, next we have Economic Development Update, and that's Debbie Tutte.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I know we've got a lot on the agenda, so I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. An exciting program has come our way that we can actually offer to our businesses, which is exciting. A new microloan program for all Adams County businesses has been in collaboration with Adams County, Colorado Enterprise Fund, and the Small Business Development Center has been created for $1 million. And this is great. It was the largest microloan that was actually given this year for any of the other areas. The program provides small businesses access to capital for those who are having difficulty obtaining financing in traditional sources but are capable of repayment. We've already pushed this out to our businesses. I've actually reached out to several of our businesses. I know that they're right in the, at that pivotal point of trying to expand, so I know this program will be very helpful, and we will get them in touch with the right people, and hopefully we'll have some success stories from that. A couple of expanding Northland businesses. Adjustments for Life or Dr. Joe Arvey. I know many, I think everybody knows him. He's been here for 21 years in Northland over off of Melody. He actually expanded. He took the space next to him, another 600 square feet. So, he has 1,500 square feet that he's always had, the space right next to him. He is leasing that. Also, Core Progression. I know a lot of you actually attended their ribbon cutting when, five years ago. They opened over on 115th and Huron in the industrial park there. They've actually purchased the former North Star Bank, and that's 5,000 square feet on Melody. And they're really growing. They started out with three employees. They've got 25 now in five years. So, it's really great to see these kind of companies moving forward. They're doing major renovations and actually an expansion off the back, so not just the 5,000 square feet, but actually some expansion off the back. So, we're pleased to have retained a business that was here. For tonight, I would like to highlight some of the findings from our third annual Northland Business Survey. Eighty-one businesses responded. Business retention, expansion is the foundation of a healthy economy. That's where most of the jobs come from, and of course, we want to always keep our companies here. They've spent a lot of money here, they employ people here, and of course, we are trying to always keep them here. And we know that this is a priority for the city. So, I'm just gonna, you've got the survey in front of you. A couple of things is you can look at all of the survey notations and all of the results online, and that is at www.northland.org/2016businesssurvey. I encourage you to do that because there's a lot of open-ended questions in there that I think you'll find of interest. But first of all, 83% of the respondents operate in less than 5,000 square feet. We always talk about Northland is always catering to small entrepreneurial companies, and this does definitely prove that. And interestingly enough, it was a range from 500 square feet up to 55,000 square feet of the respondents that did respond, but most of them are under that 5,000. Seventy-three percent have less than 10 full-time employees, again, catering to the small business community. Forty-six percent expect to increase their workforce this year. Interestingly, in 2015, only 40% of our businesses that responded to the survey, and again, you have to look at this, the ones that responded last year may not be the ones this year, so take that in consideration. But last year, 40% planned to expand their products and markets, and this year it rose up to 65%. So, again, looking at the economy increasing and doing better. Last year, I love this one, I'm sure all of you will as well. Last year, 69% planned to increase their sales revenue. This year, it jumped up to 92%. That's a great sign. Last year, 59% rated the availability of quality workforce as between good and excellent. And workforce is always an issue when we go out and talk to our businesses, and we're gonna talk about that in just a minute here. So, last year it was at 59, again, good and excellent. It only increased incrementally to 64%. So, again, this is an issue for our businesses, finding qualified workforce and keeping them there. And that kind of goes into the five top challenges. Out of 13 questions that were given to rank, the top five challenges that came up was number one, employee turnover, staff training, again, all related to workforce development. The third one was access to local suppliers and speed to market. And again, I would really, the Business Retention Expansion Committee and all of you, I know, on council are really committed to retaining our companies, helping them grow, just like the ones that had just expanded. What we'll be doing is taking all the comments that were given to us, six, over 77% of them said they wanted a call from the Economic Development Group. So, all of those people who said that gave us their names, gave us their business, and we'll be contacting them and doing business retention visits with them. And then also, look at the whole report because I think what you'll find, and it's been consistent all three years, of why did you move to Northland? Why are you here in Northland? And it's consistently, all the way through, it's location, 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 and cost of due business. And you'll see that in the report. You have any questions for me?
Questions?
Just in general?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I saw that the Anything Libraries moved in their administration offices.
Yes.
What's gonna happen to the Crossroads Food Bank?
That's been gone for quite some time, from what I understand. Marcy, do you know for sure? They've closed, I think, I want to say they've been closed five months.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, five or six months.
They haven't moved their entire offices over here. It's more of their tech offices.
Yeah, their technical administration.
The administrative tech. It's not the entire administrative offices that are moving.
Right.
It's a good portion of the technology, pretty much is all over there, and then a handful of the other administrative offices. There'll still be some offices at Holly. Is it Holly? Yeah, Holly.
And then on the digital advertising billboard sign, are any of these repeat advertisers?
Yeah, most of them are.
That's what I was thinking. I thought we had a wait list for people who were, for new businesses who were wanting to get on there, so.
We do.
Very happy to have repeat people.
And the way that we do this is if at the end of the month, somebody doesn't come through, we have like five or six businesses that want up there every single month. For instance, Charlie's Auto. If there's an opening, he wants up there, so we keep that open. Grandma Sweet Tooth, so for what we did to entice businesses to take the survey is we actually did a drawing of all the business names that were in there. We chose three, and one was Grandma Sweet Tooth, so this month they're going on there not because they paid, but because they participated in the survey. Next month, one of the other participants will, and the third month, the next one. But honestly, every single one of these are repeat, except for Grandma, well, Grandma Sweet Tooth is too. They've been up there too, but everyone is a repeat. What we do is we do it by priority, so how many times they've been on there. So, maybe let's just take Arvey's Heating and Air. If they've only been up there two times, and we've got a company that's on the waiting list that wants to be, has gone nine times, it's always gonna go to the company that hasn't advertised less. I would suspect that Charlie's Auto, a lot of times what happens, companies say, yes, indeed, I want to be on the board. They don't submit their artwork in time, and they don't submit the check in time. And so, at the last minute, we're struggling to get somebody right away. So, that's generally how it works. We've got a ranking, and again, the ones that don't, haven't, the most haven't advertised on there, it's done by ranking. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Alright, next on the agenda is Public Invited to be Heard. Now, before I invite folks to come up to speak, if you are here to speak about a public hearing item, then this is not the time. This is for any, anything else other than public, other than public hearings. And then during the public hearings, then you can come up and speak. So, with that, I will invite anyone that wants to speak on anything other than the public hearing items to come up to speak to council for up to five minutes. Yes, please come on up.
I'm here to talk about the CR, Resolution CR 55, the capital equipment purchase for the automated sanitation department.
Okay.
I don't know if you find it more appropriate for me to speak now or when that resolution is being discussed.
No, we don't have any, so go ahead.
Yes, sir. Can you please state your name and where you reside?
My name is Gene Elliott. I'm with Elliott Equipment Company out of Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. And would you sign in, please, too?
Sure. I don't know if you also find it appropriate, but I had prepared some words, and I wanted to give you guys copies of them.
You can give them to the city clerk.
Having already known the recommendation of David Lowitt, I'm here to respectfully contest the recommended bid for trash truck purchase. Elliott Equipment Company's been in business for over 45 years. We have five service centers across four states, including in Denver, to support our equipment. We have sold many hundreds of trash trucks over the years. Refuse equipment is our specialty. I'm here to support the New Way Sidewinder Automated Sideload Body bid. As an equipment dealer new to the state of Colorado, I first began calling on and demoing the City of Northland a year and a half ago, just prior to last year's bid. At that time, following the demo, the operator had said he liked the unit a lot. At the time, Elliott Equipment Company had purchased the building to provide service to the Colorado market. I made Keith in the sanitation department aware of that, providing an address. As the bid process played out, I was here at a council meeting last year to where a purchase was approved. David Lowitt presented his recommendation for a Mack with Scorpion body despite the Sidewinder bid coming in several thousands of dollars lower and having never heard a single complaint about the function and design of my body. The city council quickly approved the resolution, and it was over. My body was never mentioned for a good or bad reason. My body, I mean the actual thing that goes on the back of the chassis. I represent that specifically, not the actual thing that has wheels on it going down the road. I followed David out at the meeting and asked him what his reasoning was, and when I did, I explained that I was representing the New Way Sidewinder bid. He had no idea what a New Way body was. I tried several times to follow up with Keith after the bid in sanitation department to get some understanding, but he was always busy when I tried to stop by and didn't really respond to emails or voicemails. Fast forward nearly a year later, another bid is out for a trash truck, and again, I came with a demo, this time with a different operator. The demo was a couple of weeks ago in March, it's the day of the big snowstorm. All the Peterbilt's, that's a brand of chassis, had trouble keeping traction, and ultimately all the trucks were called in off route. I left the truck for them to demo for the next couple of days. When I picked the truck up, I was again told the operator loved the truck. Ultimately, the bid tabulation showed that the New Way body came in $17,701 less than the Scorpion body, which is pretty material. So, I'm here again at this meeting where a purchase will be approved, and I feel I must speak up about my product as it has several potential savings for the city and strengths over the Scorpion, and it just kind of seems to be ignored. To support my bid, I supplied compaction rates of the body, the amount of trash that can get packed into that unit, that have been achieved around Colorado while demoing it. I also supplied a reference sheet of towns and haulers running the body for Northland to check in with, including the City of Loveland that runs about six of them. On the following, one of the biggest differences in design between my truck and the truck that David Lowitt intends to recommend is the arm. Now, when you're running an automated trash truck, it's the type that reaches out, grabs your can, dumps it, and then returns it to its position. Most people set their carts on the curb, and so the reach of that arm and its capacity to lift is very important. Its durability, since it's repeating actions over and over again, is important. The Scorpion arm has an eight-foot reach. Now, if you were to have a large SUV parked parallel along the street, your trash can sitting on the curb, as the trash truck pulls up, if you left only six inches of space between it and the car as it came to reach out, it could not reach that cart on the curb. So, the driver would have to get out, move it so that it could get to it, causing more time. It's an efficiency thing. Again, with the arm, the Scorpion's arm comes out, but then the gripper that actually grabs your cart is offset several feet to the right. So, if you, somebody had their cart set on the curb, and there was a car directly after that, they could not extend the arm because it would run into the car because the arm is offset several feet in that direction. So, again, these are a couple of ways that my product is different and designed, in my opinion, better. And in addition to that, it's $17,701 cheaper, and so I just wanted to make you guys all aware of that.
Alright. Thank you. Okay, we'll have discussion at the time the resolution comes forward, so, thank you.
So, Mayor, so, Mr. Elliott, which company did you say you were with in part of the bid?
I'm with Elliott Equipment Company, and it might be on the bid as Elliott Equipment Company or New Way Sidewinder. Think of it as like a... Its durability, since it's repeating actions over and over again, is important. The Scorpion arm has an eight-foot reach. Now, if you were to have a large SUV parked parallel along the street, your trash can sitting on the curb, as the trash truck pulls up, if you left only six inches of space between it and the car, as it came to reach out, it could not reach that cart on the curb. So, the driver would have to get out, move it, so that it could get to it, causing more time, it's an efficiency thing. Again, with the arm, the Scorpion's arm comes out, but then the gripper that actually grabs your cart is offset several feet to the right. So, if you, somebody had their cart set on the curb, and there was a car directly after that, they could not extend the arm, because it would run into the car, because the arm is offset several feet in that direction. So, again, these are a couple of ways that my product is different, and designed, in my opinion, better. And in addition to that, it's seventeen thousand seven hundred and one dollars cheaper, and so I just wanted to make you guys all aware of that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll have discussion at the time the resolution comes forward, so.
So, Mayor, so.
Sure.
Mr. Elliott, which company did you say you were with in part of the bid?
I'm with Elliott Equipment Company, and it might be on the bid as Elliott Equipment Company, or New Way Sidewinder. Think of it as like a car dealer for garbage trucks, there's the name of the dealership and the brands they actually sell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? All right, now, see, I don't see anyone approach, so we will move to the financial report. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Jason Loveland, Finance Director, presenting the first quarter 2016 financial report. I will start off with an update on sales and use tax. Year-to-date, sales and use tax collections were at three point two million dollars, or an increase of just over eleven thousand dollars, which is less than half percent from the prior year. I wanted to point out, if you look at the green line representing 2016, you'll see that it has a consistent pattern of kind of the January declining to February, as most years, and you'll see in 2015, it actually spiked. We had some anomalies on the timing of some returns being filed in 2015, and so that's part of the representation of why sales and use tax looks to be, you know, basically flat year over year, is because some of the timing that occurred in 2015. We'll see that number when we do our next update, next month, for 2016. Extend beyond the typical marks that we've seen, and we'll show growth more around the six or seven percent levels. But I wanted to point that out, that was an anomaly last year that happened in February, and then it kind of shows up again this year when we're doing comparisons year over year, so I just wanted to point that out. Specific numbers within the, within sales and use tax, again, early in the year is hard, based off of timing, and some issues that we encountered last year. But use tax is up about twenty-two percent. Auto use is coming back down to earth a little bit from last year, remember, it was kind of in the high twenties. It's more around ten percent, still seeing, you know, gains in auto use tax, but it's not growing quite as much as it was in 2015. Accommodations tax through the month of February was down fifteen percent, and then sales tax, again, because of the anomaly, showed that it was down about two percent. So, I think next month, we'll be able to have a better discussion when we compare year over year than these first couple of months, due to the. Be able to have a better discussion when we compare year over year than these first couple of months, due to the timing issue that we saw last year. I'll start with the general funds, when we get into the fund details. So, we're a quarter of the way through the year, so the far-right column identifies collection and spending rate, so obviously, to be exactly at a quarter, we'd be at twenty-five percent. These numbers compare favorably with total revenue collections being at seventeen percent, and total expenditures at twenty-one percent. That's typical of how we operate each year. We're not perfectly cyclical, as far as spending or revenue being received. As you know, late in the year, is when we collect a lot of our taxes, specifically sales tax, and so we'll catch up those collection rates at that point. The total revenue in the general fund collected is four point three million, and total expenditures of four point nine, so a net change in the fund balance of a negative five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, if we were to stop doing business at the end of February. I will point out, this is the first time that we've kind of taken a look at fund balance numbers in a, in a report for 2016, and you'll see that the 2016 budget for beginning fund balance, we estimated that to be eighteen point two million. That ended up being nineteen point five, once we got through the audit and making all of our accruals and adjustments. So, that shows us, you know, a seven percent increase versus what we had estimated it to be. You'll see that at the far-right column of the one hundred and seven percent. Was there any questions specifically on, on the general funds, with regard to any personnel, expenditures, purchase services? You'll see capital outweigh, it's just the timing of when we put our bids out, to the time that, you know, we actually go through that process and write checks for those. So, that falls a little short, but everything else?
No, no questions, go ahead.
Okay. So, the non-major governmental funds, we'll talk about Conservation Trust and Capital Projects. CDBG happens on a reimbursement basis, so that should net to zero. So, the Conservation Trust Fund revenue is at ninety-two thousand so far this year, and expenditures of fifteen thousand. Again, there's a significant capital projects for Parks Barn in that fund, so until that happens, we'll see low spending rates through that fund, so it's really made up of one large expenditure. Revenues compare favorably to last year, they were about eighty-six thousand dollars. And again, Conservation Trust Fund is from the state lottery proceeds, is where that funding comes from. So, that change in fund balance of seventy-six thousand through February, or through March, excuse me. The Capital Projects Funds, you'll see revenues of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and expenditures of thirty-three thousand dollars, for a net change of positive nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Again, Capital Projects Fund, as it's titled, is specific to capital projects, and as those invoices and bills are paid, we'll see gains the second quarter in some of the spending. So, the beginning fund balance, you'll see in that fund, 2016 actual, is twelve point three million dollars, so we're starting, starting the year off with a fund balance in that fund of twelve point three million. Onto the major enterprise funds, water and wastewater, which we combined together. Total revenues are at two point two million dollars, matching total expenditures of two point two, for a net change of one thousand sixty-five dollars. And again, there, point out, the beginning fund balance for 2016 is sixteen point five million dollars, just slightly under what we had estimated that to be at budget time. So, total revenue collection is fifteen percent, that's typical, as we'll see throughout the year, during the watering season, revenues and the collection rate pick up, you know, over the summer season. And then expenditures, a large amount of that percentage that you see is driven by the capital outweigh, and that's again, just the timing of the projects. The non-major enterprise funds, stormwater and sanitation, stormwater funds, total revenues of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars, and expenditures of thirty-six thousand three oh nine, for a change of forty, just over forty-two thousand dollars. Beginning fund balance in that fund is just under a million dollars, as you can see, for 2016. And in the sanitation funds, revenues of just over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, expenditures of two seventy. Again, beginning fund balance for 2016 is at one point four million dollars, slightly above what we had planned in the budget, or projected. I want to say on the, on these reports, we did the carryover before, or after March, so some of these numbers, specifically in water and wastewater and capital projects, the budget numbers are going to change quite a bit when we come back for the April report, to show, to reflect the changes that we had adopted in that ordinance from the carryover. Now, back, can I answer any questions, if you have any?
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we will move to public hearings, Joanna.
The first one is CB-1867, a bill for an ordinance amending the Northland zoning ordinance regarding the keeping of chickens and bees in residential zones.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. City council had the first reading on this ordinance during the meeting held, two weeks ago, on April twenty-fifth. The ordinance were approved for second reading and scheduled for tonight. There were a few friendly amendments, which I want to point out during your report. First of all, there was a revision that was added to clarify that the allowance of, in this case, bees and chickens, through this ordinance is allowing it as a licensed activity, and shall not be deemed to confer a property right. The second thing is that the sunset clause was removed. And then, third, there was a section added that would direct city staff to evaluate the impacts of implementing the, either chicken ordinance or bee ordinance, and provide information to city council via report prior to June thirtieth of 2017. So, the council does have several options tonight. Number one is to approve the ordinances as written, approve the ordinance with revisions, oppose the ordinances, or table them for further consideration. Now, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Hoffman to add some additional comments.
Thank you.
And just, and this is as much for the folks that may be here to speak tonight as anything else, the way this is structured tonight, there are three separate public hearings. The first public hearing amends the city's zoning ordinance, that if approved, would allow the keeping of chickens and bees, subject to whatever permitting requirements the city would adopt. The second two ordinances that are separate public hearings that follow the zoning ordinance, the first one is keeping of chickens, CB-1865, and the next one is the keeping of bees. So, if folks are here, for example, to talk for or against the keeping of chickens, I'd suggest that, so that your record is clear, that they should probably be speaking on 1865, which is the second public hearing, whereas, if they're here on the issue of keeping of bees, they'd probably be more appropriate to speak on 1866, and certainly, if they want to speak to both, they can speak to both at each public hearing. But that's the way it's structured. Once the public hearings are completed, and you go on to ordinances on second reading, we can certainly walk through what the options are again, as you consider what to do in terms of whether to approve or not.
Thank you. All right. I will now open the public hearing on CB-1867. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on CB-1867, either for or against it?
Craig Johns.
If you sign in. Thank you.
And I live in Ward Four, I think. I just would like to speak for the keeping of bees. We've heard every argument possible, except perhaps one. Tonight, as I listened to the talk about how much we need more workforce here, and the different kinds of workforce, a couple of things came to my mind. One is, in 1969, when Northland was first designed, it was, it was named by Life Magazine the most perfectly planned community in America, and I just wanted to know if we're keeping that, or are we losing it? And what are the things that people want these days? When they look at a community to buy a house, to move in, what are they looking for? Does Northland have it? And I'll tell you what they're looking for. Go to the places that are expensive. Go to Denver, downtown Denver, where houses are three times the cost of what they are here in Northland. Go to Broomfield, where the cost is much, much higher, pound for pound, dollar for dollar, square foot for square foot, than they are here in Northland. What's the difference? There's a feeling of community, and they also have chickens and bees. It's a simple little thing. It's not the only thing, I get that, but it's a, it's a mindset that's different. And if we're going to live in the sixties, that's one thing. If we're going to live in 2016, that's another. So, I hope you vote for chickens and bees.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, either for or against CB-1867?
And again, I would encourage the folks that are here, that if you're speaking on chickens specifically, it wouldn't be this ordinance, and if you're speaking on bees specifically, it wouldn't be this ordinance, those are following later.
My name is Mary Ann Coletti, I'm in Ward Two. And I'm just going to give a brief viewpoint, of my viewpoint, on the chickens. I attended the code enforcement meeting with all of the officers up at the senior center. I came away from that meeting, and there was a group of angry citizens in there. It almost got to the point that I thought the citizens were going to come to blows. It was ugly. By the end of the meeting, I came away with the real sense that the code, current code officers are under staff. So, what I'm, what I'm getting at is now you're adding in chickens and bees. And if you know the code rules, and you've talked to the code officers, you can pretty much go to any block and see code violations. I'm not even a code officer, and I can tell you peeling paint, trees, that was a big push last year. So, my thought to city council is, what are we going to do about that to add on to their current responsibilities, once you talk to the code officers that are under staff now, and can't keep up now? And one of them retired, is my understanding. Another issue I have is the public view, they told me that they cannot go into persons' backyard. They only can take care of the code, code violations that you could see from the streets. So, this chicken and bee thing, mostly the chickens, is going to be something you're going to have to rezone, I'm thinking, now, because that's not how code is now. And I can only speak for Ward Two, but I felt like we were misrepresented when I talked with my councilmen about this whole issue. So, that's something I need to address later, but that is a concern of the citizens, and especially the citizens up at the rec center, to senior citizens that maybe can't get out to vote, but they feel very strongly against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, either for or against CB-1867?
My name's Andy Hall, and I believe I'm in for, is that correct? One. Okay. For this section, I'll just say I'm very for the keeping of chickens and bees. You know, this section, which is about the, about both of them, and just allowing it. I have been working in animal behavior for twenty years, have worked in zoos and shelters and lots of different areas with animals and their welfare, and trying to improve that. I don't know if this goes in this section, but the licensing is a concern for me. I don't, I've never seen a benefit in licensing, no matter what, the animal. And currently, Northland does not license dogs and cats, which, you know, if we're looking at a public health or a nuisance viewpoint, are much stronger candidates for those nuisance and public health concerns. And as a, you know, community building, and just a beneficial area, chickens are a great model for learning animal behavior, that's my specialty. Actually, some of the top trainers in the world who teach other top trainers in the world use chickens to get their timing, and everything improved. And so, you know, the value to our kids and our citizens to improve that, to help with their dogs and their cats and their children, I see as a big benefit. So, for this section, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Christopher Banix, I'm also in Ward Two. And I think, to bees, it's just a logical thing, that everybody understands the disappearing of bees and the issues with bees. Speaking directly to the chickens issue, keeping chickens, I think, is exotic and animal- animal as keeping an iguana or a python, but they're allowed in the city. But is everyone going to get a python in their backyard or an iguana? It's not for everyone. The thought that every household is going to have chickens and bees in the backyard is ludicrous. They're not like cats and dogs, they're not the same kind of pet, and thought of in the same kind of manner. And so, to think that it's going to be widespread and cover the city with chickens and bees, I think is slightly excessive, also to the point of discussion of the excrement. So chickens make fantastic manure. Chicken manure breaks down wonderfully in water, better than any other manure, and you buy it on a regular basis, and it's called Revive. The main product or main ingredient in Revive that makes the fantastic fertilizer is chicken manure. So you use it all the time. So it's highly usable in, if you're flowers, plants, whatever, put it in your compost, it's fantastic. My grandfather did in Nebraska for 85 years. Works great. So they can become a nuisance as well as any other pet. But again, if your neighbors have a problem with it, talk to your neighbor. If you want to create community and there's a problem, I go and talk to my next door neighbor. I don't call a code enforcer. I don't say, hey, come fix my problem with my neighbor. I'm a neighbor. Because, hey, we have a problem with the fence, can I help you fix it? My neighbor had a problem with her tree, this code enforcer didn't ask it. I cut down the branches for her because she's an elderly woman. That's being a neighbor, not expecting the city to go out and fix every problem within our community. Vice versa, I have spoken to all my neighbors, many of them are elderly citizens. All of them had no problem with getting chickens or having chickens in the community as long as there wasn't a rooster. That was a longstanding compliment of every single one. The only argument that I heard, none of them had any other problem with it. So yes, they, as with any other pet or animal, there are going to be some issues. I would expect and hope that people could be good neighbors and talk to each other when there's a problem. If there is a problem with the stand, with the smell, or dealing with it, talk to your neighbor. That, I encourage, to solve the problem, and rather than getting more code enforcement. If there's a problem with branches, talk to your neighbor. Maybe they can help. Help you cut them down, just like I did my Vietnamese neighbor across the street. I helped her cut the tree down, because she couldn't do that. Two little old ladies are not going to be able to take care of that, so I did it for them. Helped them load it up and haul it to the place. So that's being a neighbor. You shouldn't expect code enforcement and the state to be responsible for the community that we live in. Being responsible with the people is to talk to them. They won't, you know, I think people are afraid to talk to each other. They're afraid to go to their neighbor and say, can I help you with this? Or this is a problem, can we talk about that? And then help them fix the problem, not, oh, we've got to cut those trees because that's against the code. That helps nobody. That just creates argued and division and problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against CB 1867?
Hey, I'm, my name is Karen Garcia, and, just sign in here. Okay, we've talked a lot about why we want chickens and how good they are. The eggs are far superior quality than anything you can buy in the supermarket, but some of the concerns, from what I listened to from the last meeting, is something I'd like to talk about. One is, is the noise. And really, chickens make noise, they, dogs make more noise than chickens. Chickens will make noise when they lay eggs. If they're scared and, you know, they find something good on the ground that they want to share with the other chickens, they'll, you know, but it's, you know, for a few minutes. That's about it. And as far as the smell, we're talking about having six chickens in the yard. It's not going to be smelly. I mean, chickens themselves do not smell. The poop smells, if you don't take care of it, so does dog poop. And actually, chicken poop, you can use, like Mr. Bannix said, for composting, which is what I'm planning on doing, which I would hope that most people would plan on doing. You can't compost dog poop, and you can't compost cat poop and litter and all that, but you can compost chicken poop that's in the hay, in the coop, and so it's very usable. And there were some other concerns, too, I think, that people had said about the chickens like flying all over the place and getting over the fence. Well, that's really simple. You just clip their wings, and then they don't fly over the fence. And that was the other thing I had spoke about. People, if they want to have chickens in their backyard, they really have to make an effort to have that six-foot fence, you know, surrounding that yard. Like I said, my husband and I did that in anticipation last summer. We put a six-foot fence around our whole entire property. But the bottom line is this, I think what I'm hearing is a lot of people that are against it, they really think that it's going to turn into some kind of wild zoo chicken craziness. There was a lady at the, my husband went to get a passport, and she had answered a phone call, and she's like, oh, another person that wants to talk about the, you know, the chickens. So when we went up with our paperwork, and I said to her, I said, I'm gathering, you're getting a lot of phone calls? And she said, oh, yeah. And she kind of rolled her eyes, and I said, I guess you don't really, you know, approve of chickens. And she said, well, you know, I really don't see, I really don't want my children to see my neighbor doing, and she did like this with her hand, you know, with the chicken. And so I said, well, you know, I tried to talk to her, I said, they, people have this preconceived notion that it's going to be something barbaric or Neanderthal. Most people that I know that are homesteaders, that, and I know a lot of people that have chickens, I have friends that have farms and stuff, I find that they take care of their property better, because one, you know, if you don't have a clean property, if you don't take care of the chickens and clean up everything, you're going to have sick animals. People that garden, if you don't take care of the soil and you don't take care of your backyard, you're not going to have good vegetables. And the other thing is this, I find that people, if they're able to sustain themselves in the way that they really want to do it, like I said before, in a respectful and a responsible way, their backyards are going to become their sanctuaries, their little piece of heaven where you can go and relax from all the craziness outside in the world. So they're going to take better care of their properties. No one wants to walk into a backyard if you want to sit down and relax if there's chicken poop and hay and stuff, you know, all over the place. So, you know, that's all I really have to say about that, and I just really hope you consider allowing us to, at least give us a chance to prove, like I said, that we can do this in a respectful and a responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes on CB? I'm sorry, in a different way. Okay, either for or against CB 1867. Is there anyone else who wants to speak either for or against CB 1867? No? All right, I'll close that public hearing on CB 1867, and Joanna, the next one, 1865.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code by the addition of new provisions to Chapter 14 entitled Animal Control Regarding the Keeping of Chickens.
I will now open the public hearing on CB 1865. Is there anyone here that wants to speak either for or against CB 1865? And this is keeping of chickens.
Andy Hall, again, Ward 1 this time. And specifically to the chickens, I'm obviously supportive of this. And as I mentioned before, I have several concerns to look at. One is that the licensing, I do see it as unnecessary, burdensome, and truthfully unbeneficial, or not beneficial at all. That's from years of never seeing licenses in dogs and cats and other animals benefit the owners at all. I actually know Denver just started eliminating cat licensing and chicken licensing out here maybe next to eliminate that as a burden. The requirements for the coops, as I said, I've worked in zoos and seen a lot of good and bad designs for enclosures for animals, and a six-foot height limit on a coop is troublesome for somebody who's six-foot tall to go in and try to clean their coop. This would only lead to neglect of cleaning the coop, if it's burdensome on that individual. I am not at all familiar with codes on other buildings and on a property, but I know my shed that was there when I moved in is taller than six feet. I can walk in it just perfectly, and a lot of people use commercial sheds, purchased at Home Depot or whatever, as chicken coops. So it will cause some undue stress for people to, you know, to have to modify that or build something that they're just not going to be able to get into to clean easily. I think that's pretty much it, although I would love to see an increased number of chickens. That's my personal preference. Denver does have eight. And the purpose of that was to, you know, allow for some more and to allow for the recruitment of new individuals every few years when you're older and start reducing the amount of eggs that they lay. You can recruit, you know, two chickens every two years or a chicken every year just to start replenishing the ones who are slowing down, and then by the time they reach their eight to 10 years of full maturity and probably going to die if they haven't already, then you've got a nice supply. So, you know, increasing that number I don't see would be an issue at all for any of the concerns I've seen. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to 1865?
Hello, city council, Mayor. So my name is Diana Nelson. I'm in Ward 1, and I'm here to speak in favor of chickens and bees very briefly, but especially chickens, since they seem to be the more controversial, controversial subject. I just wanted to put in a voice for myself and my husband and our peers, who are very enthusiastic about exploring the possibilities of small-scale farming, self-support, without, let's see, without investing as much effort as you would on a real farm, but to have a supplement that we can raise ourselves and know how the animals are treated, how they're fed, how the, how, sorry, how they're medicated, anything of that sort. And so I think that having this sort of ordinance would make our city more attractive to people of my own peer group. So take that into consideration, please.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to council?
Hi, my name is April Bartholomew. I'm in Ward 2. I also would like to speak in favor of chickens. And I worked in the animal industry also for almost a decade. I've seen what can happen with ill-treated animals, and as a consumer, shopping at the grocery store and understanding the cost of goods is continuously growing, and then you're talking about the Listeria outbreaks and the produce, I'm a huge advocate of being able to grow my own food as much as I possibly can, even in a small section of land that we own. My husband and I obviously can't afford a farm, so being able to allow us to have chickens would allow us to be able to provide for ourselves in even the littlest possibility, knowing that the chickens that we would be able to have are going to be fed appropriately, they're going to be medicated appropriately, and that they're going to be organic and they're going to be fresh. I'm not going to need to worry about, oh, the cost of eggs has gone up to $4 for a dozen this time around, oh, now it's gone up to $8 a dozen. I want to know that I can be able to provide fresh eggs for myself and my husband. And there's additional benefits to it, being able to have organic eggs, having two dogs of my own. I'm able to give those raw eggs to my dogs because I know that they are organic and there's no harsh chemicals in them. I can crush up the entire egg, the yolk, the whites and the shell, and feed that to my dog because I do feed them a raw diet. So not only is it going to be beneficial to my husband and myself, it's going to be beneficial to the pets in our family. What this is also going to mean is, as others have mentioned, this is going to be manure that I can compost, and then my, my own pets are not going to have as much waste because they're not getting unnecessary corn, wheat, and soy that you would get from a department store. And my chickens will not be getting corn, wheat, and soy from a department store either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on CB 1865, either for or against?
Eric Hoffman, Ward 2. So when I moved into Northland several years ago, I moved into Northland with the understanding it was a residential community. It's the way it's been since I moved in a long time ago. Now we have people that have moved into the community and they've decided that they want to become ranchers and farmers. So instead of them going out and getting the appropriate property to become ranchers and farmers, they're going to try to force all the rest of us to have to live with their decision. I think it is a bad idea to allow it, and just wanted to make my point made.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council on CB 1865? 1865.
This is chickens.
Chickens.
Correct. Chris Bannix. Again, my, my concern and I, again, mainly the young woman's comments, I want fresh eggs. And I've had many years, many, many years in the trucking business, in industry, both in Aboh, in Denny Transport, and so I know what happened to the eggs when you put them on a truck. So not to go into all that, just because it's on a truck doesn't mean it goes to the grocery store. Goes to King Super down on T-Hole Street. T-Hole Street breaks a truckload of pallets down, and they send them out to the stores. But that's not right away. You can sit out there, a week to two weeks, I've had Reefer Trucks sitting out on T-Hole Street for two weeks for the unloading of the eggs. And I had some of my drivers trying to go get the empty trailer. So I want my eggs fresh. That's my main concern, that they're been sitting on a lot at King Super for two weeks before they actually go into the warehouse, and then eventually it does work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against CB 1865?
So my name is Angelica Tritex, soon to be Ward 4. We're purchasing a home, closing is next week, so we'll be new Northland residents. So one of the reasons why we decided to choose Northland is because we did look at homes in Brumfield, similar to what the first gentleman that spoke, they allow chickens, but prices are much more expensive. So when we saw that Northland was considering allowing chickens and bees, that solidified our decision. We decided to purchase a home in Northland, which was a big plus, whether we decide to have chickens of our own, we just liked the, the idea that the community can choose what they want to do on their own property, which is a big plus for us. And we have several friends in different cities that have chickens specifically, and I really haven't heard any negatives. I've heard a lot of positives, the fresh eggs, the compost they can do. It's, just wanted to say, I think it's a positive thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against CB 1865?
I think this would be a good opportunity to allow the parents of Northland to teach their children about where their food comes from, how it's produced, and allow them to see the process of what it takes to actually feed an animal that produces food for them.
Sir, can you please give us your name?
My name is Brandon Cleverly.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against CB 1865? I will close the public. Is there some, oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Lauren Weatherly. I live in Ward 4. And I just, really quick, just wanted to express my, my support on behalf of myself and my husband for all the reasons, you know, I echo what everybody else who's in support of the ordinance has, has talked about, but, you know, I, I'm by no means a professional. I've done a lot of personal research, and it seems like there's so many benefits, there's really very few negatives, and all negatives stem from irresponsible ownership. And so I think what you've tried to do through the creation of the ordinance is addressing the issues of, you know, what it means to be a responsible owner of chickens, and, you know, I, I just don't see people who are going to be irresponsible in this wanting to sort of jump through the hoops of doing the licensing and, you know, figuring out all of the specifics of their coops and all of these things. So I commend you for taking on this issue, and I hope that it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against CB 1865? Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against CB 1865? I'll close the public hearing on CB 1865. Joanna, CB 1866?
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code by the addition of new provisions to Chapter 14 entitled Animal Control Regarding the Keeping of Bees.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on CB 1866. Is there anyone here that wants to speak either for or against CB 1866? And this is concerning the keeping of bees. Anyone wish to speak either for or against?
Come on along.
Because the last time I spoke, I, I belonged to the Brighton Bee Club. And so to clarify what bees really are going on with the bees, of course, the Brighton Bee Club did their bees from a gentleman who's a professional beekeeper, and he brings 1,500 bees every year from California to keep his apiary open. It's 1,500 new hives every year. And Brighton gets about 25. So that's just to keep his apiary running, to keep producing them. That's just one of the main apiaries here in Colorado. There's an ongoing problem with apiaries, just keeping the bees going. And it's not just professional, wild bees have seen a tremendous drop and diminished
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on CB 1866? I'll close the public hearing on CB 1866, and we will move to ordinance's second reading. And I think it would be good to read the entire title, Joanna Soss, Houston Edits for CB 1867.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland zoning ordinance regarding the keeping of chickens and bees in residential zones.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right.
The only, the only thing I would add to what has already been said is, again, this is the zoning piece that if you're inclined to allow chickens and/or bees, you have to first address the zoning prohibition. If you look at the language of the ordinance, it does address in cap, in capital letters in the last sentence, the keeping of dogs, cats, and then it says rabbits, chickens, bees. So if, for some reason, council, the motion on the floor is to approve it in hold, that was the motion that was made, but if there is an inclination to only address chickens or only address bees, I would suggest that you should look at that language and delete, if someone wants council to consider one or the other, delete either chickens or bees from the ordinance, just so that the record is clear. This zoning amendment would allow both.
Thank you.
Subject to the permitting requirements that would have to be approved in the next ordinances.
Okay. All right. Discussion. Unless, before we, Jim, did you have anything else to say about this at all?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, all right. So Kyle, did you want to?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to see if it's all right with you, if I just kind of give a little history on how this all started.
Certainly.
So Marcy and I had a Ward 3 meeting about this time, yeah, about this time last year. And Westminster was engaging their residents in regards to the same thing. And so we took an informal poll at our Ward meeting to see if people would be interested in this, and just had people raise their hands, and I would say overwhelmingly supported it, you know, through that informal poll. And so we brought that back to the council as a whole. And as a council, I think we decided that that was a great public engagement piece as well, and you can see from the room, it has been. And so we, we planned some community outreach meetings, and we planned a survey with staff, and, and I thought it was really well-attended, and anyone can jump into and correct me if I'm wrong, but at the meetings, it was pretty supportive as well from the residents that showed up to the meetings. We got the survey results back, and 85% of the residents who responded wanted, you know, they were all right with having chickens and bees in our city. And I think that that's a number that we can argue with. At the end of the day, that's huge. It's huge. And so if 85% of our residents are saying they want something, I think it's our job to, to really listen to that. But I really wanted to make another point tonight, and I think this is a little more than just chickens and bees. I think it really goes down to engaging our community and listening to our community. When residents want their voices to be heard, and, you know, and that's what we wanted to do in this, in this topic, and we don't listen, I think that, that we, we really are getting in some, some scary water. And so I think that, I just wanted to put that out there for everyone tonight, that, that remember, we, we wanted this, we wanted this public engagement piece, and, and the public was engaged. And so if we don't listen, I think that that's, that's a little scary.
Any other discussions?
Yes.
Carol?
Okay. So I just want to start out, this is my point of view. This has been a very hard decision. I don't think any of us have taken it lightly. I know that I have not taken it lightly. So the city has really done their due diligence, going out into the community and presenting the pros and cons. I mean, the website is very extensive information, has extensive information. The forums gave extensive information. And three forums we have that were, you know, well-attended for what we typically have in Northland. The Ward meetings, I know I made mention of mine, and Kyle has just said they made mention it, and taken informal polling at our Ward meetings, and then just the questionnaires that went out. So I think the city has really done their due diligence about this, these two topics. And the staff has put in a lot of time giving us all the information that we really needed to make an informed decision. The results of all these polling methods is definitely overwhelmingly in favor, has definitely been in favor. And I've received no's personally by phone calls and emails, people that I know and respected my Ward and in other wards. But I think, as Kyle said, when you're not listening to the majority of what you're hearing back from people after you put it out to them and gave them some input on a situation like this and a topic like this, and then you don't listen, then you're not really doing what you're here for. I believe the other surrounding cities that have implemented the system are doing it. I don't ever hear anything negative back from those cities. All the ordinances are still in place. What's important about the ordinance as written right now is that we will revisit it in a year. And I think that's really important, and actually for me, it was a really crucial part to include into this ordinance, because I want to talk about it in a year, and I want staff and code to come in here and say, what's been going on? Is it good? Is it bad? Is it a failure? Is it a success? So for me, that's a really important part of the ordinance that needs to be there, and that's protection for the people who really aren't on board, so that we can talk about it later and say, maybe it's not working. Let me see, I just really feel we should give the residents a chance to prove that they can be responsible chicken and bee owners, and that they can be good neighbors also at the same time. So that is my feeling.
All right. Any other comments? Kim?
So I think that we have received some input from our residents. I don't believe that we've received 85% of input from all of our residents. Yes, we have a small percentage who responded, and 85% of that small percentage were in pos, were in favor of keeping of the bees and chickens. Most of the outreach that I have received has been negative and has been, please don't do this. And while I appreciate everybody, you know, even the folks who are here tonight, it's overwhelmingly in support of these ordinances, but in general and overall, for what I have actually received, has been, has been no, please don't do this, we, this isn't what we want in our community. And I certainly commend all of you for coming tonight, and certainly for expressing your opinions, both positive and negative on it. I just, I don't think that this is right for our community, and based on the input that I have received on it.
All right. Is there anyone else in discussion?
From a personal standpoint, I don't believe I'm going to go out and put chickens and bees in my backyard. And, you know, just so that you all know how I feel about it, when, when I ran for office, when I was elected, all of that, I didn't do it on my own personal beliefs, you know? I agreed that I would look at all sides of the story, and I have. And I, I do find that more and more communities are going to chickens and bees. I'm hoping, you know, that everybody can, can cohabitate. Together and get along over it. I was really, the point that made me think twice about it was there was a comment from the gentleman about how not everybody in the neighborhood is going to have chickens. And that kind of, that made, I hadn't thought of it from that way, you know? Everybody does have a dog, not everybody's going to have chickens. I think it's important that we do it. I think that it's important to the neighborhood and to the majority of our residents. I did receive negative phone calls also, but not everybody's going to like everything. And I, I just, I really do think that it's important for our community.
I just want to say that I don't know how much more we can do to try to engage residents to come out and give their opinion. I mean, we've been working on this for a year, and so, I mean, we had three forums and the conversation around not being able to come out in the evening. Those, we had a Saturday, we had a daytime one. So we were accommodating of everybody and their times that they can come, work schedules, night schedules. We had this on the town hall meeting, we've been putting it in the Ward meetings. And I point this out, and I appreciate Kyle for taking us back just a little bit, because the one negative phone call that I have received, I received on my way over tonight, and it was someone who felt that we did this in a one-month time period. And I, I can't stress enough that this started a year ago, over a year ago, in this conversation. This is not something that we rushed through, this is not something that we took lightly. It's been in publications, it's been discussed, and I guess my last comment is just at some point, if more residents wanted to be for or against, then they needed to be here. So we have to, I have to consider what the majority is of people who come to the forums and who express and who reach out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think I am for this as well. I'd like to echo what Carol had said, revisiting this in one year to decide what worked in your neighborhood and in your wards and what your errors were. I think that there was one fearless leader in particular who really turned me on to this. She had even come down to the Capitol for a tour and lobbied me to tell me why this was important to her and her family alone. I think it's exciting, and I think that your ability to teach your children where your food comes from starts, starts in your own backyard, and doing it right here in the city of Northland, it's, it's, it's great. My family's been here since the 60s, and it's an exciting time for our city, and to see a lot of youth be engaged as well. I appreciate everyone's feedback and coming here tonight to share your opinions and your passion for this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, can I just offer, offer kudos to our staff as well? I thought they did a great job during this whole process, and, and like, you know, echo what Marcy said, you know, we really did put a lot of work into this, and staff did a lot of that work.
Right. And you did. Yes. Okay. Anyone else? Yeah? Well, the only thing I'll add to it, I received numerous emails and phone calls in the very beginning when we first started talking about chickens and bees, and then it kind of slowed down a little bit. And then now, it's the ordinance just came forward, it started picking up again. And I would say maybe it was 50/50. You know, I, I really can't say it was overwhelmingly one way or another. So, but the more I listened, and the more, and I did do a bit of studying on the subject. So I think, and especially since we'll be looking at it in another year, to see if there's a downside to this, I would be supportive tonight also. So with that, is there any other discussion before I? Okay. Joanna, please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote in CB 1867 on second reading, passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snetsinger.
Thank you. All right. Next we have CB 1865.
A bill for, sorry. Go ahead. A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code by the addition of new provisions to Chapter 14 entitled Animal Control Regarding the Keeping of Chickens.
Move to approve?
Second.
Jim?
No additional comments, Mayor, thank you.
None contrary?
This is unique to chickens, and this is the permitting requirement for chickens only.
Okay. Is this the time, or, I, I did pick up a comment that the gentleman talked about, the height of the coops, would this be in this area? I mean, if in fact that would cause, I mean, a six-foot coop would cause some type of issues as far as sanitation and cleaning goes, I'm wondering, how did we come up with those dimensions?
I think six feet is the standard coop in the pre-made packages, you know, like you can get at Costco.
You want, I mean, you can't.
Yeah, I believe that the, the subject expert said that six foot was the recommended as well. So it wasn't just an arbitrary number, it wasn't part of all of the charts and everything that was recommended.
Okay. All right. That was my concern when I heard that. All right. Other than that, is there any other discussion?
And I think I might only touch on the one issue somebody brought up tonight about the licensing and thinking that we probably shouldn't do that. That's actually something that I am in favor of. I think there needs to be ownership when you're entering into this because it has been so controversial here. Asking for $25 for setting, for allowing you to have chickens when you're going to have to put a lot more money into the actual coop and everything else to keep the chickens. If you can't put the $25 down for the ownership and for us to be able to follow you, and the city has your address and code has your address, I just am definitely on board for keeping the license in there, so.
Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote in CB 1865 on second reading, passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snetsinger.
Thank you. Next we'll go to CB 1866.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code by the addition of new provisions to Chapter 14 entitled Animal Control Regarding the Keeping of Bees.
Move to approve?
Second.
Jim?
No comments, Mayor.
None? Okay. Discussion?
I, I just want to echo, you know, that, that out of everything, this is something I'm really excited about. I think we read in the media a lot how important bees really are to our environment, and if Northland can play even a small role in trying to, to help bring back the populations of bees, I think is really kind of exciting, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion?
And I also just want to say that I don't think, definitely, the keeping of bees isn't going to be entered into lightly, I certainly wouldn't think. And it's not going to be proliferating throughout the city. I can't imagine everybody and anybody having bees in their backyard. I think the people that will do it definitely know what they're doing and are going to take the best possible care of the bees. So I'm definitely on board. You can't open a newspaper or listen to a News and World report without hearing about the devastation of bee colonies. So I'm definitely on board for this also.
Please, any other discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote in CB 1866 on second reading, passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snetsinger.
Thank you. Next we'll move to resolutions. Joanna?
First one is CR 36, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the State of Colorado for the use and benefit of the Colorado Department of Transportation and the City of Northland regarding landscape maintenance services. Move to approve? Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This resolution in front of you is for the city to enter into a landscape maintenance agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the city and/or its contractors to maintain landscaping and other maintenance activities as described in Exhibit A, which is specifically the four medians and ramps located in the CDOT right-of-way at 104th and I-25. The Northland Urban Renewal Authority has approved funding up to $1 million for the design and construction of this project. However, long-term city costs associated with this project would be requested from the general fund through our normal budget process, so for next year or in 2018. And the cost to maintain the landscaping and related maintenance through a third-party contractor is estimated between $10,000 and $13,000. Staff does recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion?
What's the timeline on, on this project being done, Jim? When is, when is this supposed to be complete?
Debbie's here to, I think, answer some of the details on that.
Yes, the project has been delayed a little bit just because of trying to get this in place. It's taken probably three months to come up with agreements, and also work with CDOT on the electrical and the water and getting to their standards. As soon as we get this done, we actually have drafted an invitation- As soon as we get this done, we actually have drafted an invitation for bid, so our hope is that we can get that out by the end of this month, and then we would be able to start construction. And again, the landscaping part probably won't happen until September-ish, that's kind of the, the deadline right there. But the actual construction pieces of it, we're hoping we'll get started in as soon as we get the IFB approved, so, and identify the contractor. Some of, again, some of the, the processes getting through the CDOT process.
Thanks, too.
So, I was gonna say, so Jim, if the, so Debbie just reported that the maintenance probably won't happen until September after things are done, what are we gonna do between now and then? Because it already looks like garbage, the ramps. And you'll find that's one of my pet peeves, that our entryways into our city shouldn't look as bad as they do. So what are we gonna, will this help cover that? Because in the past, we have been able to get our contractors out there and mow at least some of the, when the weeds get as tall as I am.
Yes, there's a, there's a one-year warranty on all of the landscaping, and so the initial installation will be maintained by the contractor.
That's correct.
And so we may not even have to budget for that until 2018.
Right, but I'm talking between now and when that happens, because between now and then, if we don't have something done with the maintenance of what's there, it's gonna, you'll be hearing from me regularly about, let's get it mowed. So that's what I'm asking about.
Currently, CDOT is the maintenance, right, on that?
I demand this team has been dealing with it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just to clarify, the maintenance is the responsibility of CDOT along I-25, however, we have done additional maintenance at council's request to do mowings. Yes, we do have that contract in place. I don't know the date of our first mowing with them, but it is scheduled.
Excellent. Thank you.
And they, they have some challenges reaching the, some of that in its current state, but everything that they can get to minus what's under construction and anything they can't reach for safety reasons does get mowed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I just, that's what I was concerned about, that that was gonna go away and we were gonna have this interim period where our entryways into our city look even worse, so.
It will stay in, in place. We will maintain it till such time that construction starts, obviously, that might will back out, just on that area.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
And again, just to reinforce what Jim said, we decided to put on, as, as soon as the completion of the construction is done, all of it is done, we have a one that we built into the invitation for bid with the contractor that they will have to maintain everything for one full year. A lot of times, as you probably know, you put in new grass, you put in new trees or flowers, or so, a lot of them can potentially die, right? So it's our goal that they will take care of everything for the first year to make sure everything takes well. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote. Somebody registered?
Just one second.
Oh. I'm done.
Okay. I'll close that vote and CR 36 passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Move next to CR 52.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Northland and IMS Infrastructure Management Services LLC for a pavement condition assessment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. In 2013, city staff completed the pavement condition index, or PCI, survey on all the public roadways, and we do this process every three years, so it is time to complete the task for 2016 calendar year. We did solicit proposals from independent firms qualified to complete that survey, and we believe that using an independent third party is a much better way to do it, you've got a lot more consistency in the methodology rather than having multiple people out there doing their own assessments. So this is, followed the procurement policy, the project is approved in the 2016 budget, and so staff does have a recommendation below, which is twofold. Number one is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Northland and IMS Infrastructure Maintenance Services LLC for the pavement condition assessment with the amount of $34,954, and also authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city to approve changes in the scope of work and execute relevant change orders up to the approved expenditure limit of $38,449, which is a 10% contingency. And again, we recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion?
I was just curious, were all 11 people who attended the mandatory pre-meeting building with the same company? Or why did we only get one bid if there were maybe 11 organizations represented?
Ken Kisselman, Engineering, good evening. There wasn't 11 different firms that attended the pre-bid, I believe there was like three that attended the pre-bid. This is kind of a specialized thing that not every firm can do. So one of our local firms decided that their workload was too much and they decided to have to bid on this, so we were fortunate to receive this, this proposal.
Okay. Thank you. So can, we didn't do this in-house before?
We have, and that, that I think has been some of the issues, because we've had some of our operations staff doing it and some engineers doing it, and there's just been inconsistencies, so we're looking to have this firm who specializes in this, and this is what they do, to kind of roll it out and really get a good assessment of our, of our streets, so we can continue to, again, rehab those streets and have a good understanding, because again, if somebody from operations rates it as a 50, an engineer could come out and rate that same street as a 70, and there really hasn't been that consistency, so we're striving for that.
So among those firms, they do the assessment the same way? Because maybe when you're striving for uniformity, and then next year you put it out for bid and you get a different company winning the bid, is that uniform then?
We're all required to do it every three years.
Right.
And so, you know, this is going to be the first time I, I'm aware of, but the city has, you know, subbed this out. So, you know, we're looking for that consistency in what they bring back in the data, so if it, if it isn't what we're looking for, you know, then kind of, you know, we'll regroup and see what happens. But, you know, I, I can't say three years from now that the same firm would win, you know? If they do a great job, you know, maybe there's something that we put into our policy and we have the ability to hire consultants without doing bidding processes, so we'll see in three years.
Dave, did you want to say something?
Well, I just want to reiterate what Ken's saying, that it's an Army Corps survey, and it's very subjective, and there's a certain bunch of criteria, there's illustrations that reviewers or rate the streets, and it can vary from person to person, you know? We're hoping that we have a more consistent response, and we've got a firm that's trained to do this. We have 110 miles of roadway system, the project we're close, we have now, we've, and in the past, we've reached into the operation group to help, help us get through and visually walk all of the streets, miles, lane miles of the streets to come up with a rating. We think this is going to be a much better, much more efficient way to do that, and we hope the consistency will be better, and we'll be able to compare what we did in the past, the last three, two times when we've done this.
Thanks, David. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I had another question, so don't. Is this going to cause any disruption in any of our traffic? I don't think it will, but any of our traffic flow patterns or anything, any disruption to our residents?
This is, it's mostly residential streets that we do, and if they're, if they're out in, in other areas, and then arterials or collectors, we can, they'll have traffic control, our contractor.
So minimal impact?
Minimal.
Okay. Like for a few minutes at a time, and that's about it? We won't have major street closures or any of that kind of stuff, correct?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure our residents knew that we were looking at that, there might be some delays, but it's not going to be significant. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Thank you. All right. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. I'll close that vote and CR 52 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 53.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Northland and EST Incorporated for the 104th Avenue and Grant Intersection Study.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. In 2015, it's brought to the attention of staff that there were some queuing and level of service issues at 104th and Grant Intersection. It was requested that we review the intersection, do a traffic analysis to determine what we could do to improve the level of service in that location. The big issue there was the potential of permissive left-turning movements, and for those of you that have seen those flashing yellow arrows instead of the solid red, solid green, it's that type of analysis that we're looking to complete. So staff has solicited proposals from independent firms to complete this work. We did follow the procurement policy. In this case, the project will also be funded by the Northland Urban Renewal Authority as being part of the urban renewal area. So attached to this memorandum is a resolution that if is approved, would authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Northland and EST Incorporated for the 104th and Grant Intersection Study in the amount of $28,000. And then there's also an authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to approve changes in the scope of work and execute relevant change orders up to the approved expenditure limit of $30,800, again with a 10% contingency, and staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion?
So, so we're, we're approving a NERA?
Yeah.
A NERA funding? I mean, to me, it just seems a kind of off, because we didn't approve, we don't, we don't usually approve their stuff.
So, so very similar to the, the landscaping project, we're going to be executing the contract and supervising the work, but NERA is the funding source.
But why? I mean, NERA is, NERA is there to eliminate blight and help aid in redevelopment and vitalization, a traffic study. I really have a disconnect, and it's so weird how this one rubbed me the wrong way, and God, I hate to be that way, but this, I have so many questions on this one. I don't understand, first of all, we're doing this study because, why and how many complaints have we had about it? And left-hand permissive at 104th and Grant seems ridiculous, because it seems like really dangerous, so I don't even get that. And it seems like weird timing for this when we're having so many issues at the marketplace, like if we're going to relate it back that it affects traffic at the marketplace, but the marketplace has its own issues right now, so it just seems like a timing thing, too. So I have lots of things that I need answered on this one.
Well, I will, I'll speak to some of those, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Willett to give more of the backstory there. I would say that it is within their district, and generally, this is an allowed use of their funds is to improve traffic flows. It may have an, an impact on the marketplace, but I think that's part of what the study would have to tell. David, Cory, do you want to add anything about the, how they're able to do this?
You know, I guess maybe, you know, I was here during the budget planning process, and this was originated through several citizens, several council members, as I recall, and we initiated a traffic operations forecast, came forth to budget, to council during budget planning season and CIP process, and we talked about all this. A lot of our signals are antiquated, they don't have, the controllers aren't sufficient enough to run a number of phasing sequences on lights that typically an intersection's that big are required to do so. This is not a wasted study. The whole, I, whole 104th quarter really needs to be studied along with the marketplace as a transportation corridor, as well as with the marketplace redevelopment here sometime in the near future, I hope. So it's not a wasted project. The funding sources, you know, like I said, it's within the jurisdiction, I think, or the authority of the NERA to pay for that, and during the budget planning process, it was decided that through council and NERA, that NERA would fund the project, and as we like to do contractual-wise, what we're asking, who to do is approve the contract tonight.
It's within NERA's authority, but is it within, I mean, the city should pay for a traffic study. I just, sometimes the funding source of using NERA, I question, so.
And that's fine, but, I mean, that was the recommendation we got from council at the time of budget planning, is to have NERA fund the project. And it doesn't matter to staff, I don't think, whether it's NERA or the city funds the project. Assuming you want to do the project.
Yeah, I don't remember. Kyle?
I totally agree with you, David, that we need to be looking at 104th as, as a transportation corridor, and we have issues. I still can't wrap my head around that intersection having flashing yellow lights to, to make that turn. And, and the intersect, the intersection I think of is when you come out of King Supers further down 104th to try to go back west, you know? I mean, that scares the hell out of me every time I have to do that. And so, and that's kind of what I envisioned right there, and I just, I can't wrap my head around having those yellow lights flashing for that, maybe at late at night or something.
Yeah, well, they, they flash all the time. It's, it's, it's basically a warning that gives drivers that are making a left-hand movement against traffic permission to make the turn if the oncoming traffic is, there's enough space between oncoming traffic. A really good, very brand-new light, it'd be exactly the same, it'd be Pecos and 120th, it's in Westminster, through just a little west of Huron Street. So, again, like I said, the study is, it wouldn't be a waste of peace, all the lights on the corridor need to be studied, especially the ones over by Bannick Street in front of Amero Ford, when that all develops, so this wouldn't be a wasted project. There is some complexities, because of course Thornton is, oh, basically in part, because they have half the intersection's in the city of Ford.
So I totally agree that I don't think NERA should be paying for this, I think it's a city cost. And then my second concern is on the bid summary sheet, there's no information on there except who the bids were received from. There's no pricing information, so I don't know that we, you know, how the people were selected on it, but I, I agree with, this, I, and I don't recall us at, at the council meeting asking NERA to pay for it, so if we did, I think that that was an oversight. I, I don't think that that's right, that we should have NERA pay for it myself.
Did we discuss it as part of the larger project? Like, maybe we didn't get into the details of addressing this particular intersection of NERA funding more of these traffic studies? Jason, I know you have something to say, would you please share?
Jason might have some, some light on this, because we put the package together. The only thing that I would mention is, it was part of the budget process, it's a separate project in the CIP section, the Capital Projects Fund, that identifies the funding source as NERA, as well as the specific project location. The budget was for $35,000. NERA, this is also in their budget, to pay for the project for $35,000. So, the project was going to get paid for by NERA, it's approved in their budget, then it was approved in our budget, identifying, you know, the source revenue. And we have other projects that are similar to that. I think there's utility studies that will be happening at Carl's Farm and at the marketplace, where we actually really just try to simplify the process by having, you know, it's going to be city staff that's working on the URA projects, so they're going to go through our procurement process with our staffing. So it made, in our minds, more sense to kind of make the administration of that a little simpler as far as the budget, and kind of those procurement processes.
Did we not talk long ago about doing a jurisdiction, like combining Federal Heights and Thornton and doing a whole study on 104th of everything that goes along there? I swear, we talked about having a joint jurisdiction study done. No?
No.
Okay, so I, I think, I don't know, this is scrounging about $28,000, which in the scheme of what the city does, really isn't that large of an amount, but still, I wonder about the timing and why it's just being that one if we're not studying others at the same time, because everything seems to go together on 104th. So, I'm not necessarily against it, I, I don't know, I guess I just wonder why it's coming up right now.
Were, were you discussing at one point of replacing some of those lights, and so that was why this came forward? I know, I'm very supportive of permissive signaling, I, because I've seen it in action, but it's a good thing for a study to make sure that it's the appropriate place for it, you know, that's all this is, so.
Yeah, all the signals on 104th need to be upgraded. We're, we're working on some smaller signals now, up by Livingston and further westbound that don't need major configuration change, replacing wires, a controller, can cabinets, panels, and those signals through our, through our operating accounts. So these bigger signals like Huron, Huron recently got a study when we did the Huron Street improvements, but certainly Grant and, and Washington need to be looked at at some point.
So I'm, I was just gonna say, so I'm looking at the CIP budget, and it is in here buried, you know, under the funding source, it does say NERA.
don't need major configuration change, replacing wires, a controller, can cabinets, panels in those signals through our operating accounts. So these bigger signals like Huron, Huron recently got a study when we did the Huron Street improvements, but certainly Grant and Washington need to be looked at at some points.
So I think that's, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so I'm looking at the CIP budget, and it is in here buried, you know, under the funding source, it does say NURA. It also says NURA for marketplace pedestrian bridge assessment. That makes sense, because it's part of the marketplace, the marketplace is one of our biggest NURA areas. I don't think that it was called out to us during the budget meetings, though. You know, it's, gee, these are the capital improvement projects, and this is just our summary, and I don't know that we, that it was expected that we called out that these were NURA-funded projects. But you are absolutely correct, it is in the budget document, it's being funded by NURA. The other one is just a line item called utility studies that is general slash NURA. So those are the three that are pointed out in our budget document, but this one just has too much of a disconnect, too. What I see is they're urban renewal areas. I'll shut up.
And just last point, it's just, I'm not as concerned about the monetary issue as more of a safety issue. I just can't, like I said, wrap my head around this permissive signal there.
In this way, you need a study to decide one or another, you know, and have experts look at it, because definitely there are places they would not be appropriate.
I don't want, I mean, even though we've mentioned the word permissive, there's a permissive left, I think that was some of the early drivers. I think there were some queuing issues as well and not getting enough turn time there. So I think the focus of this is to study the whole signal, how it works, lane configuration, are the signal heads in the right place, you know, how the whole intersection should operate in a modern fashion, not just the permissive piece of that. So the focus is on the entire intersection operation, not just the permissive left-hand or right.
Thank you.
Marcy?
And Mayor, I would just say that being someone who literally two or three times a day makes that left turn there, I share in the concern about it, but I think it needs to be studied. And the other side that I'd say about it as a whole and why I'm supportive of looking at the study, I hope it's a study that we follow through and we do what we say we're going to do, because that's what I'm just not on board for, another study that we don't act on, so.
Okay, for me, I, since it's in the urban area, the NURA area, I would go ahead and just leave it the way it is at this point, as far as the funding goes.
I'm supportive of changing it to be city funds.
So if we, the person who motioned for it needs to make a friendly, is that correct?
Yes, so long as the second does as well. And then certainly, it sounds like we may need, we may need a budget amendment in the future to reflect the change in funding, I don't know that, but you certainly could.
So I would make friendly to amend the agreement for professional services, referring to the payment to be coming from the City of Northland in lieu of NURA. Jason, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, I don't have the resolution. Does the resolution actually state that?
The resolution part doesn't.
Okay, I would say that if that's the wish, I don't know that we would need to change the resolution, we just.
If it doesn't say. But the contract, the contract itself.
It's not, the resolution authorizes the city to enter into the agreement, I think that's what Jason's saying, so the resolution itself doesn't need to be amended.
If we choose not to ask NURA for reimbursement, that's our progress, so.
All right.
And then we'll take care of the contract.
I don't think NURA will force us to take their money.
Right. Okay, so then attorneys will take care of the contract piece of it.
So, Corey, do we need to act as a council to make that clear direction, that it is a council direction? Because right now, I don't know that you have.
What are you voting?
A majority to do, and I think that's what Carol was trying to clear up, is to make sure that we.
I think it would be helpful. It's not required for the resolution, but it certainly would be helpful to understand where you, where council desires the funding source to be.
So like a motion to make the funding source the City of Northland?
Yes.
Okay, something like that.
And it can be a separate motion from the resolution, because again, the resolution is to be signed by the city.
All right, so first we'll do the resolution, because that's.
That's fine.
What we're talking about right now. So is there any other discussion?
Well, I thought we had to make the friendly on the resolution.
No, we're. Because the resolution is lost now. The resolution is okay the way it's written, we just want to have a second one, a motion for the funding. Okay, so, open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
Close that vote, and CR 53 passes unanimously.
Okay, so now we need a motion, tell us the words.
So I'll make a motion that the funding source for, shoot, I can't get up to it, Council Resolution Number 53 be the City of Northland and not the Northland Urban Renewal Authority, in the amount of up to $28,000 plus $2,800 contingency.
Second.
How's that?
All right, discussion? Please open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
We'll close that vote, and the motion to designate the funding source for CR 53 to be the city instead of NURA passes with one no vote cast by Mayor Downing.
Okay, thank you. Next would be CR 54.
Resolution to authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order to Denver Industrial Sales and Service Company in an amount not to exceed $33,397 for the purchase of one infrared paving unit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Kim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On April 19th, the city received one bid for an infrared paving unit in the amount of $33,397. Again, this is part of the general fund Streets Maintenance Division Capital Equipment Account that identifies approximately $39,000 for this unit, so the bid came in under budget. And so attached to the memo you have is a resolution that if approved would allow the city manager to issue a purchase order to Denver Industrial Sales and Service in the amount of $33,397. And Mr. Willett is here to answer some detailed questions about that unit as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Kim?
I'm allowed out tonight, sorry, so I have two comments. Number one, congratulations for coming in under bid, but number two, is this such a specialized piece of equipment that we only received one bid instead of multiple bids to choose from?
It's definitely not a specialized bid, and I have no idea why we only got one bid. It was posted for at least a couple of weeks, maybe more.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mary Noon, please open the vote. Thank you, David. Vote is open, please vote.
We'll close that vote, and CR 54 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 55.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order to Bruckner Truck Sales Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $275,641 for the purchase of one automated sanitation truck.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On March 22nd of this year, the city received seven bids for an automated sanitation truck. The bids ranged from approximately $229,000 to a little over $274,000. It included various combinations of bodies and chassis. The budget shows an appropriation of $273,000 for one automated trash truck. The city did request some minor specification changes from the low bidder that did meet our specs. The total bid then would be $275,641. And so there's a memo and attached to that a resolution, if approved, allowing the city manager to issue a purchase order to Bruckner Truck Sales in the amount of $275,641.
Thank you. I would like to, David, can you speak to the issue that was brought forward and invited to be heard from Mr. Elliott?
Sure. First, I want to just say that, you know, I respect staff's opinions greatly, that's the first thing, that they are completely supportive and highly opinionated and prefer Scorpion body on trash truck.
David, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you lift your microphone? I'm even having a hard time hearing you this evening, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I was just saying, the staff, the staff preference, and we vet all of, you know, our equipment purchases through staff quite thoroughly, after all, the people are going to be using them. And they've, we've been going to Mack Scorpions now for the third straight year, and we want the consistency, and we want to stay with one tech brand, and they prefer using that particular piece of equipment, they've been trained in that piece of equipment. While they're certainly polite and they appreciate demo models coming in, you know, at the end of the day, this is the unit they prefer, and I agree with them, I like to support them, and I would strongly suggest that council purchases vehicle in light of that.
Thank you. Okay, just, yes, Marcy?
I'm not sure, I'm just confused even, because I don't even see that they submitted a bid for this thing. So, I mean, I get that they demoed it, but did they even submit a bid?
The Sidewinder's bid is in your bid sheet, it's.
Which company is it? But it's not listed as Elliott Company.
No, they're a sub of, on one of the.
Okay, but can you give clarification for me, which of the sub would Elliott fall under?
It's on the second page of your bid tab, and it would be of Bruckner Truck Sales, and they got a Mack chassis and a Sidewinder body.
All right, oh, I see it, it's the first one, sorry.
It's the first one.
Okay.
So what's, I don't, what is the difference in training? I mean, you know, why does our staff prefer one or the other?
It's not only training, it's, we have experience with the getting repairs to the vehicle, we have good service records. Sidewinder is an unknown commodity to us, and, you know, we don't believe that the $17,000 is worth the extra unknown fact and what the maintenance cost is. As an example, we pulled a couple of maintenance records here, and the Mack, the Mack Scorpions over a two-year period, the maintenance cost totaled $10,700, and two of the Peterbilt trucks with a different chassis totaled $129,533 for a two-year period and $30,643 for a two-year period. So I believe that we have enough information here to recommend to council that long-term, this is a much better buy, and our staff supports that.
Marcy, just one more thing, am I correct in remembering that we've had other cities that since our purchase of our original Mack Scorpions have inquired about our use of them and shown interest in having them?
Yeah, absolutely. We were one of the first ones to purchase, it was in a trade show, other people would come up here wanting to use the equipment, and there's a whole host of cities that are going to switch to the Scorpion bodies.
Any other discussion?
I will just respect your recommendation, because you're working with them every day, and your guys are working with them every day, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so the thing that I noticed, it's still, I mean, Bruckner submitted four different bids, so that just seems odd to me, and I understand why, because they're different types of equipment, but it's, it just seems kind of strange to me. And we are going with the second highest bid, so I'm a little concerned about that, but I understand the process and understand some of your concerns with routine maintenance and everything. The one thing I would say is what is the maintenance cost for the Scorpion? I mean, you pointed out in one, but what is, what would the comparable be for this equipment?
Well, I don't know what the Sidewinder would be, if that's what you're asking, and we don't have one of those units.
Oh, so you gave us what the Scorpion was?
The ones we currently have in service.
Okay, I got you, I thought you were giving us what you had done research on what the Sidewinder maintenance was and why that was a concern. I apologize, I misheard the company that you had said.
I would like to elaborate on your point about the Bruckner, the same site, even though this bid package was specific, there are, the vendors take liberty on giving a lesser type of specification or a greater type of specification. If you look in your bid tab, for instance, the first page, Bruckner's sales with a Mack and a different type of body on it, they have a plus, $6,141, so that's a spec that's a higher value than they believe than what we specced out. And then on the second page, there's two negatives, there's a negative $17,000 and a negative $25,000, and those are a lesser value than what we specced out.
Any other discussion? All right, thank you, Dave. Please open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
Close that vote, and CR 55 passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, next we have communications, Antonio, we'll start on your side.
Thank you. Not a whole lot, just excited about our award meeting tomorrow night, and it'll be my first award meeting, and I'm just excited about it, so looking forward to it.
Marcy? I have a couple of things. First, I just want to let the residents know, in case you haven't heard unofficially, that the fire district election that was held, that Jenny Murphy and Tim Long were both reelected back in, which is great news for Northland, we stood the chance of having no Northland representation if they did not get reelected. So congratulations to both of them, and thanks for the work that they do. I also attended the police award dinner on Friday night, which was a wonderful evening, and it was great to see our officers recognized, and a little heart-wrenching to hear about the year that we had, so certainly appreciate them and their families. And then I want to just mention one other thing, that Brooke and Ryan from Economic Development Office and I attended a workshop about a week ago from Mile High Connects. We invited one of our businesses to also participate in it as part of our business development group. And it was really interesting to see other cities that, I was surprised to see that some of the other cities aren't as far along in some of their project planning and having their council members as on board on projects as I think we are, so I would give kudos to staff for that. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that I am really looking forward to the food truck carnival. I attended a conference today in which several people who I met mentioned the food truck carnival, so it was fun to hear people out in the community who don't know who I am within the city here and say they're coming to the event, so I'm looking forward to it and hope to see everybody out there.
Okay, thank you. I actually don't have a lot, because, she's so fun. I'm going to be at the food truck carnival on Saturday, so I am really looking forward to that, that's going to be a lot of fun. Other than that, I really don't have anything this time.
Okay, here. I would just like to share that I attended, also with city manager Jimmy Hayes, the Adams County Commissioners and Mayors Youth Awards presentation at Brittany Hill, and honestly, if it's, if there's one thing you could pick all year to attend, it would be this event, because the kids are so deserving. We see the segment of Northland kids come in here that Jenny talks about, but when you go to these awards, it's all of Adams County, so it's from all the cities. We hear stories we haven't heard at our council, and, you know, it's just as inspiring to hear everybody's stories as much as our kids. They received some special scholarships that night, our student, William Braun, he got an additional scholarship that night from Adams County, and it was just really nice. We sit with the families, you get to interact with everybody and hear their stories just one-on-one, so really an inspirational event, and I hope to see more of our council people there next time, and to make you all come, because it's really good for us to show up, so. Besides that, I can echo Marcy's sentiments about the police recognition banquet, it was amazing, and I love to sit back and just listen to the stories and know that these guys really deserve the recognition that they get, and it was a really nice event, so. That's all from me.
All righty, I did attend the Backpacks to Briefcases event, and it's put on between the schools and Adams County Education Forum, and it's, again, Northland hosted a table, and it was north, 10 Northland students that received recognition, so they were really, really excited about it, and of course, then they also work, they have a workshop throughout the day, and they help them through a lot of things. And then it's kind of interesting, because at the luncheon, then they help them with the etiquette piece of it, and how to talk to your potential person that's going to employ you and that type of thing, so it was very interesting. You know, they tell them, you know, turn your hat around, or don't have a hat on, you know, don't wear this type of thing. I mean, it was very, very interesting. So, and I was very impressed, because we had so many kiddos from the Northland High School this time. And the other thing is kind of a fun thing also, I got a notice here that the Commerce City Memorial Day parade is going to be May 30th, and wondering if any council people want to be on the Elks float this time. So if there's anyone that would like to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
We have to check our calendars.
Okay, all right, well, that's Kim, and then I'll go.
I'll go.
I want to drive the float. I'll talk to the Elks folks about it. As long as Kim's in the back, I'll drive. And I don't know how many folks from the Elks will be on the float either, you know, but it'll be different than normally, we're in a car and throw candy, which we always get in trouble about, because you're not supposed to throw candy, but it's really a lot of fun to throw candy, you know, so.
But we're very careful, and we don't throw it at anybody.
Yes, that's right, that's right. And then the candy's loaded in the back of the car, you know, and then they've got to clean it out, you know, so, but we have a lot of fun doing that. So that'll be May 30th, and let Margie know, she'll be the one to set it all up. All right, that's all I have, Jordan.
Perfect, I just want to do a special congratulations to William again, it's incredible.
It's incredible. Another special shout-out to a gentleman named Tyco Evans, which is a Daniel Spun scholar out of Northland High School. Myself and Councilmember Molika being Daniel Spun scholars is an incredible honor. And it's good to have one in our own city. Graduation is next week for Northland High School. So congratulations for all the seniors. I attended an event on Cinco de Mayo called Latinas Represent, which is inspiring young women. Women can be what they can see. Northland High School, there was a great group of women from Northland High School attending that as well. Good representation. And this weekend, I was asked to attend a training in Chicago called the Young Elected Officials. So we'll see what we can bring back to the city. And that's it for me, ma'am.
All right. Kyle?
It's a day late, but I want to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. To my mom and grandma's. Also, my wife turned thirty a couple of days ago. And so I have to wish her a happy birthday up here.
And you had to put the big number out there, too. Oh, Lord.
I also attended the police department's banquet. And I just can't give enough kudos to what they do and how they protect our community and serve our community. And so, and then lastly, I just want to give kudos to council and to staff. I think tonight, that wasn't an easy topic. And I thought we really did our due diligence and we did a good job. And so I'm really excited for Northland and the things that we're doing.
Thanks, Kyle. It's nice. Kim?
I just want to echo that we have our award forum meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at Shepherd's Hall. And our new city manager will be there to say whatever he feels like saying for us. And he's more than welcome to take two hours if you would like. And, you know, just throwing it out there for you. I also attended the police banquet. And it gets harder every year to go to that. I honestly have to say, when I first started going, we had one officer who had been shot at, you know, one situation. Then it's been two. This year, we heard earlier, it was four. You know, several of them had actually been hit, had been hospitalized, had been out of work. And it's, it's very humbling to me that we have such great people in our city, working for our community, not only in the police department, but our entire staff. And something that I would like to see happen is a bit more staff recognition at our council meetings. You know, they, they gave out all sorts of awards at our police banquet. That's just one segment of our staff. We have other staff in the city who get recognized and get awards from their different organizations that they belong to. And I just think that that would be something really good that we would, that we could do at council is recognize our staff a little bit more often. We all sit up here and tell them, thank you and good job. You know, I am sometimes harsh with some of my questions and question some of the items that come before us. But we have, excuse my language, but we have a damn fine staff in our city. And I think that they should be recognized a little bit more often. So I'll get off my soapbox on that one. And then I'm going to take just a few seconds to do a police banquet. That's just one segment of our staff. We have other staff in the city who get recognized and get awards from their different organizations that they belong to. And I just think that that would be something really good that we would, that we could do at council is recognize our staff a little bit more often. We all sit up here and tell them, thank you and good job. You know, I am sometimes harsh with some of my questions and question some of the items that come before us. But we have, excuse my language, but we have a damn fine staff in our city. And I think that they should be recognized a little bit more often. So I'll get off my soapbox on that one. And then I'm going to take just a few seconds to do a little personal congratulations to my son because he was accepted into the Northland P-Tech program this next year.
Congratulations. Wonderful. Okay. Joanna?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Nothing. Jim?
Thank you, ma'am. I've got, going to hit a couple of highlights from my Friday report and get some direction hopefully tonight. And then also, maybe we'll come back with some study session items on some of the things I'm going to mention. I think first thing I wanted to talk about was this request for an additional movie in the park. So staff has been talking with a company called El Comercio de Colorado. It's a bilingual newspaper that targets Hispanic businesses, general audiences. And they have come to Northland and said that they would be able to do an additional movie in the park for us this year. The challenge is it is a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars to do that. And so I've talked with Ms. Peterson. We think we can scrimp and save and find some money in the budget to do it this year if possible. It is about the cost of what it takes for us to put on our own movies. So it's not really an exorbitant number. But I wanted to get some direction from council to see if you want us to do that or if we should pass this year and just put it in our budget for next year.
I'd like to say something. They approached me a few months back. So I've been working with them personally, to my family and to different families around. I think that's a great addition to bring to our city. I know that they do one in Westminster.
And ask staff to find money to support something, no matter what it is, whatever. And we all have our causes that we want. I'm just not thrilled about that. And especially after having to push and pull for two years to get movie in the park for all residents. I have some issues in, in just putting it in. I also want to just say that this right here is one of those reasons that I think previous council member Susan Klein had pushed and pushed and pushed to have some kind of criteria and approval process for sponsorships and have that go through at a set period of time. Because then we approve things and then we max out budgets. And I really am in favor of getting that to come forward again. I want to see us have some set criteria of how we make choices. But I'm not in favor of approving something in the middle of the year.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So my question, just from reading, when I read your email, Jim, was that if it, well, basically, they were supplying everything. Like they're supplying the rights and the screen, everything. What is the twenty-five hundred for then? It seemed like they were really doing the total package. And I didn't really understand what our twenty-five hundred went towards.
Okay. Yeah, I had Michael Stricker pull some numbers for me. We normally budget the following, just for one film. Seventeen hundred dollars for the actual production itself, which is the screen, the projector, the sound, et cetera. About four hundred dollars in movie rights, fifty dollars in supplies, two hundred in advertising. So it kind of comes up to around twenty-five hundred, what we spend every year. That's basically the similar request they had of us. Is, I'm assuming it's to cover their costs for putting it on.
But they, I mean, I wish I had the email in front of me. They went through and listed all the things they were going to cover, which were all the things you just mentioned. So to me, the twenty-five hundred is additional to supplying everything that we would supply when we would do a movie. So I just have a little disconnect on what the twenty-five hundred is actually for.
Looks like they're doing a pre-movie fiesta, but they're more paying for it again.
Does that have the list of what they're providing?
Uh huh. Right there, it starts at the bottom.
Can I just read it?
Sure.
So El Comercio de Colorado would provide the film and the associated movie rights, the screen, sound and projector. They will fully staff the event, including a pre-movie fiesta with food trucks, free popcorn. They would promote the movie through El Comercio. And, okay, so that's about it. But to me, that's like the whole enchilada. So.
Correct. And what they're, they're saying is to cover their costs, they're requesting a twenty-five hundred dollar sponsorship or payment from us because they have all these overhead costs associated with doing all those things you just read.
So they're not providing it. They want us to provide it. I think the way that it's stated is incorrect. But I definitely, I see where Marcy's coming from in that we did, we had to put a lot into what we were doing for the other films in the park. And I'm not sure that you go about it by asking staff to cut their budgets at this point in time. I don't know. I'm not against it. I just, I guess I don't understand it enough yet.
I just want to plan for 2017, that's all. I want it to go through the same process that we had to go through when we brought it forward. We brought it to a study session. We asked about it. I, I failed the first year putting it forward. I had rallied council to get behind it. We had to do a movie in the park to prove that residents would come out. We put forth that effort and then we were able to get it going. And I just, I just don't like it when things come forward like this, especially when you're asking for more money in the middle of the budget. I'm against that no matter what it is.
Any other discussion? Kim?
So, number one, I think that them saying that they'll do it and then asking us for the money to do it is a little disingenuous. But then the other thing that I have an issue with is, so we're going to have this one. And then does that mean we need to have one for all the other ethnic groups in the city? I just, I, I am a little concerned about that, that we're pushing one audience specific for some of these. And I just don't think that's fair to the rest of our community who aren't the same ethnic persuasion. And that would be my, one of my concerns with it.
Wait, and I just want to say that that is so not my thing. My thing is all a budget thing and a process thing. I just want to respect the way that the process goes. But I just want to be clear about that.
Kyle?
And I'm actually a huge fan of, you know, cultural movie and representing different cultures. And I think this is a great opportunity. I am on board with what Marcy says, though. I think that there, we have to have a process in place to do things like this. And I wish they would have, they would have came to us sooner because I think, like I said, I think it's a great idea. I just, I think that it's something that we have to plan out. And it's something that I had to get used to on council. But it's, it's kind of doing the whole process a disservice, I think. It's not an exorbitant amount of money. You know, but it is, there's a precedence. But there is a precedence and we, and I think we need to follow the process. I like the idea. I just think that we need to follow the process.
Jordan?
Mr. H, I just have a quick question. To clarify with the movie, it's, it's not all in Spanish, correct? So it's not just geared towards one group of individuals?
No, it said to be a family-friendly recent release, could be in English or Spanish, and then with subtitles. So if it's in English, there'd be Spanish subtitles and vice versa.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I agree with Marcy.
You know, and I think it's a great idea. And I, you know, and I think providing any type of cultural films is a, is a great thing, you know, to, to give to. Because we have a lot of different nationalities.
Geared towards one group of individuals?
No, it said to be a family-friendly recent release, could be in English or Spanish, and then with subtitles. So if it's in English, there'd be Spanish subtitles and vice versa.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I agree with Marcy.
You know, and I think it's a great idea. And I, you know, and I think providing any type of cultural films is a, is a great thing, you know, to, to give to. Because we have a lot of different nationalities in our city. And I think whenever we have an opportunity, we should take it, you know? But I do agree with Marcy and Kyle, you know, that it's a process that we have to do. So hopefully, they will, and maybe we can get in a slot, you know, of, you know, getting it programmed for next year along with the rest of them. So instead of having four or three, we have an additional one, you know, so.
Or even if we do a whole weekend, you know, try to plan an event and do a whole weekend of cultural movies or something.
Right, right.
And we can, you know, make it, you know, a whole, you know, event.
An event. And I was even thinking food court, you know, and having, you know, and having the movies and the, I mean, you know, really having a fun thing.
I think it's a great idea. I really do. I like it.
So Jim, is it a thing where we can just, like, no more things are coming forward until council has this discussion, which you obviously, I mean, I think we all need to have at this point, so.
All right.
Yes, absolutely. I've, I've received appropriate direction, I think, on this specific one. I would, I would segue to what Councilmember Whitten was bringing up about sponsorships. That was another thing I wanted to bring up tonight. We don't have to get into the details of that. But I would say that, you know, I've got a lot of feedback in the last few weeks about sponsorships. And I had Joanna, as well as Jason, do a little look into some of the prior things that we've done. We had an outside agency funding committee that talked about funding organizations that provide benefits to Northland residents, businesses, et cetera. And then we also have a sponsorship effort. So there are two different things that I've found. And I think we probably just need to have a quick study session to talk about those things. They have different funding associated with them. And we may ultimately get to the point of adopting a formal policy. Then it's very clear to me as the manager and the staff when we receive this request that come in regularly.
I think it's a good idea to put that on a study session.
Definitely.
I can't wait till we see that no one's finding it happening.
Well, while it's a good idea, we've talked about it at study sessions previously. We had, I think it was ten thousand dollars for the outside agency funding that the council was going to help manage. And then there was the scholarships, about ten thousand dollars that could go through the city manager's office. And we've talked about doing that for a couple of years. And all we do is talk about it and then this keeps coming up. So if we're going to do it, I want it to get done. And we actually need to do it and not just have another council meeting where we talk about it and say, this is what we want to do, and then nothing happens.
And that's exactly right, you know, because we're going to have requests constantly. So we need to have some, something in writing.
Okay. I think the challenge right now is that the outside agency funding essentially is somewhat defunct at this point. And the sponsorship policy is kind of non-existent. There's, there was some direction, I think, given to the prior manager about how to do things. But I think it'd be benefit for all of us to memorialize that. So we'll look at getting a study session scheduled. And I will assure you that we will follow it through and get it finalized.
Great. Thank you. All right. Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else?
Yes, just one other thing I wanted to mention, and it was related to the legislative session, and I think Mr. Hoffman is going to talk about possibly having a future executive session to talk about legislation. I just did want to mention that construction defects, there was a bill that was dropped, I think, last Friday. I'm unclear if that made it any further than late bill status, and at the end of the day, it's really just a study bill anyway. So we might want to look at a construction defects ordinance, similar to what our surrounding communities have done. Not sure how much impact that will have on the market, but might be something we want to consider as part of that, that session. And then I did want to talk about the retreat for a moment. I've got a lot of feedback from, from all of you, and unfortunately, due to everyone's busy schedules in May and in June, as well as those of the facilitator we're trying to get, we may need to postpone that to later in the summer, potentially July or August. The other thing I heard from a lot of you is that you may not be so excited about having a retreat that is just about techniques for high-performing teams or conflict resolution and things like that. So if you agree with that assessment, then I have a recommendation for what we can maybe do in, in later in the year, but I'll leave that open for now.
All right. Any discussion on, good. So what's your recommendation? Maybe that'll help with the conversation.
All right. Well, first of all, I think I would look at, you know, a Saturday again, maybe we could identify a date in July or August that would work. We could look at an extended study session on a Monday night as well, as part of the budget schedule. Jason will be bringing back the budget schedule in a couple of weeks, so we could maybe talk about it then and figure out a date that would work. I just had some ideas that might be warranted. Definitely talking about the projects, the capital improvement program. We're going to have a better handle on, on budget and schedules for a lot of those things in the next 60 days. We could also tie it into the budget to work for 2017, identifying things that we want to put into the 2017 work plan. I think that's a great topic for, for council to kick around. And then one thing I mentioned to, to the mayor earlier today, we have goals, but we might want to look at revisiting the, the city council goals, and then we would cascade our work plan off of that to make sure that the things that we're working on on an annual basis are trying to accomplish those larger goals that you have for the community. And they could be very few, it could be three, four goals. It doesn't have to be a big elaborate list, but it would be very high level, and I think, again, that's a good facilitated discussion that helps to get to some language that might be beneficial.
Okay. Discussion.
My only comment, purely selfish, is the timing over the, the summer months. You know, I want to make sure that we, A, that we have plenty of dates towards the end of July, beginning of August.
Dates?
You know, for some, if we're going to do it on a Saturday, or we're going to do it on a week, a retreat. Because it gets, you know, it gets to be rather difficult during the, during the summer season. I would invite you all out to the boat, though.
I, I love the idea of getting updates. I think that, I'm struggling with how those two types of retreats might mesh. I think that, that what you're talking about, the addition, is a great idea, and I think that needs to be almost a separate retreat, similar to how some other cities do it, and almost an update retreat type thing. Having a difficult time seeing how those two might mesh on that same data.
Okay. Anybody else?
No. You know, I don't think this is the forum, but I, I think that we're not addressing what we all wanted to address by pushing the retreat back. So as far as council dynamics and things like that, if we're not going to talk about it, and if you don't feel we're going to talk about it, I don't feel that gets us anywhere. So I don't like the idea of pushing it back and pushing it to the side, because I think it's really important.
Hi, I'm coming up.
So I think the challenge, I, I agree. I mean, I, we worked very hard to try to find some dates. I think, based on all the feedback from all nine of you, the only dates I think we have open are Monday nights. Saturdays don't seem to work, and we really were struggling trying to find a weeknight, even a, a normal Wednesday or something at six o'clock to try to have the meeting. So we can absolutely take your direction and, and schedule something, but I think at this point, we're probably looking at a Monday night, if it's going to be in May or June.
It seems like, I mean, I think on the upcoming agendas, June something 20th maybe didn't have anything scheduled. There was one date that didn't have anything scheduled for the study, and it seems to me, why could it not be done in place of having a study? Is that correct? Is that what it says on there?
We added two items this morning, but, of course, right? But, but we can, we can move those if we need to. June 20th, I think, is the date you were.
When I saw it, it was open and it made sense, but if you have items on there, I get it, so. I just think there has to be a way to do it, so. It's a new council trying to find its, you know, its function together, and I think it's really important.
Mr. Will tells me that the, the two items can be moved. One was the school's own assessment at Holstrom, and then the other one was the traffic calming policy. So we could very easily move those to, to July. I know the school is looking at implementing in August, so that would still give us time to work with them and their personnel to, to get that going in August. We want to target June 20th.
We can try it. I don't know.
I don't know that.
Everybody can be, make it, you know, so.
Do we have to check in with the facilitator to see if they have?
We, we will, but I, I think part of the hamstringing that we're doing to ourselves is just using one facilitator. So we've got, there's a lot of different facilitators. I know Ms. Jensen knows some people, I know some people, I'm sure Cory does as well. We can, we can identify somebody that can come to that, that, that retreat.
Make it happen. Great. All right.
So just, just to clarify the agenda, not to get into the details, but one I'm hearing is we do want to talk about the council dynamics, high-performing team techniques, things like that, but then also maybe some substantive items related to the capital projects. Do a little both, or do you want to try to parse those out?
I, I don't think they intermingle very well. I think that they should be two separate sessions. Yeah, I don't think they intermingle it well at all.
And I'd really like, the envision I have of, of the capital projects is I'd like staff to be there for that as well, you know, and really kind of have their input and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you for the direction. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay. Cory?
Just briefly, and Jim touched on this, I think the direction that council provided at the last study session on construction defect was to see what happened during the 2016 legislative session and then bring it back. So I think what Jim's getting at is with your approval, we will set it for a study session again and go through the options in light of the fact the legislature appears to have done nothing during the session again. And then, just sort of my, my preview of coming interactions is that two weeks from tonight, I would anticipate there will be an executive session on the agenda and actually several items.